Well. Running redevelopment.
Yeah.
And the school.
Yeah.
But.
Okay, what date was that? Five sixteen? Six sixteen?
Uh, the thirteen.
That was Monday.
Yeah, that.
So Thursday.
Welcome to the commissioners meeting. We're gonna state the pledge of allegiance.
I must have done it.
All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I meant to.
The second order of business here is to approve, uh, the regular man- meeting minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-two. If you gentlemen had an opportunity to.
Six six two.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written for June sixth. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Mr. Marv, resigning, Chair. I want to make the motion to approve all claims presented.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented, and I would call for a vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we're up, all ready for Kent, our county highway engineer. Good morning, Kent.
Good morning.
Walk right in, put you on the spot, Ben.
Uh-huh.
It'll happen to me too.
Good morning. I'd like to make a recommendation for the HMA paving for various kind of roads that we opened last.
Bless you.
Thank you. Uh, Reese Riley was the lowest, best bid.
Who was? I'm sorry.
Reese Riley.
Reese Riley was?
Yeah, we had four bids. Uh, Reese Riley's bid was one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents. So I recommended we award the project to them. And I think I gave you a bid tab.
No, he said he gave you a bid tab during your.
Yeah. So, gentlemen, what's the, uh, opinion of the board?
Make a motion to approve the highway's recommended recommendation, Reese Riley.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve Kent's recommendation of Reese Riley for, uh, just a little over one point nine dragon. And, uh, Kent, I appreciate you putting this all together.
And I had a acceptance, please.
Okay.
They have that also.
So I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I mean, we need all for you?
Uh, yes.
Chair, you need three?
Uh, yes, please.
You wanna pick those up right now?
I can get it in the.
Okay. Anything I'm here for, the highway folks, anybody have any questions, comments, things they need to bring up here? When's our shift to see a real start?
Um, it'll probably be another two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Do you still want patching and everything?
Yeah, we're finishing up patching.
I've seen some spots where they did really nice work on patching.
Yeah.
You're right. Uh, okay, well, then we are ready for, uh, thank you. Yeah, we're ready for, uh, American Rescue requests. We have rest requests from the Carroll County Recorder, the Surveyor, and the Assessor. The Recorder, yeah, you wanna go ahead. Just take turns. Are you addressing us again, so we make sure we're talking about the right thing?
Okay, um, I brought copies from, they have them, okay. Um, well, I was here about a month ago and asked to have some of the ARPA money to help with a scanning project that I'd like to do. They're the last of my large books, um, to have scanned. Um, and the majority of them, I don't have any microfilm or any other, um, copy for backup. So, um, the quote was fifty-four thousand, thirty-three dollars, and this is a company that I've worked with before. Bill was in the office the other day and I did show him how we had our, um, index books scanned and kind of what that looked like, um, on the computer. So you can see how, how nice of a job they do and they're really enhanced. And, um, I know Lauren, you asked last time which one of the, uh, that I would recommend on the quote. Um, there's two options there, and I would recommend the fifty-four thousand, thirty-three dollar quote because it's just the best enhancement. That's what I've gone with when I've worked with them in the past. And, and as the recorder of Carroll County, it's my job to maintain and preserve the documents. And I wanna make sure that they're best that they can possibly be because this is the history of the county. So, um, this company is a, um, they're easy to work with. They actually come to the building. None of our books have to leave this building to do it. Um, there's other companies that do it, but they want you to send your books out. And I, like I said, I don't have any microfilm of most of these books, so there's, I mean, that's all I have. So, um, I'm just asking that you, you grant the fifty-four thousand, thirty-three dollars from the ARPA fund for us to get that scanning project going.
How long is this good for?
I called him the other day and I asked them because I got the quote back in November of last year, and they said that that price is good until we decide what we wanna do. So they said there wasn't a.
Cause we really haven't set down any kind of plan for all that.
No. As Betty said, I stopped over there. She graciously showed me through all that and how it's all been done. And you can't go in there and not be impressed with how she's done and brought it all up to date and has it accessible. And, and, I mean, it's great. So, I'm all for it.
I'm, I'm on board too, but we gotta make that budget. So we have money for all of our projects.
There's no better time than asking now, I guess.
Yeah.
Right. I'm in favor of it. We just gotta make sure we get our jobs in order.
Okay.
Well, I think all three of these are gonna be asking that. We're gonna be giving all of the same answer, uh, unless we just decide that these three are gonna be the top three coming out, then we'll get our, then we'll line those ducks up in a row after we get those three out.
Well, we already did some for them, three hundred thousand.
Yeah, how much we have again, I forget.
The one for the ambulance has not been approved by the council yet. It was two hundred and thirty-two thousand, I think it was, or something like that.
Two thirty-two?
Is that what it was that you were?
Yeah, I still have it there. I think it's thirty-five, I guess.
This is, uh, a lot of good numbers here, but we are in a fortunate position to be able to do a lot.
That sounds really fair.
I think unfortunately.
The number two thirty-two.
I decided we have two thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
So if I just went through and added these all up directly, I just rounded them up to the next number. We got a hundred and seventy thousand and do all of these. Surveyor and Assessor.
Okay, well, you, according to you, we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars put up amongst the.
Well, that's what they pulled, a hundred and seventy.
Oh, okay, you're, that's the backwards there. Yeah, okay, I mean, you're not backwards. That's what I was saying.
I'm not backwards.
Yeah.
Um, I think this, I think that maybe this is important to make sure our history stays where we can still read it.
And find it.
And find it.
And preserve it. It's not gonna be destroyed in a tornado or.
I'm in a big favor of it, but we just gotta make sure we, I don't think we've got all of our requests, did you have?
No. What's the total amount that you got?
Yeah, that's what.
For the.
Three hundred and point nine? Uh, three nine three, three.
Right now, we have one, one point nine.
One point nine.
That's what our first.
Then we got guys sitting back there doing one point six, don't you?
Or still, she does. I think we're gonna get this, uh, well, I guess we just actually ask Stephen if he did work through, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. You ready for us?
Well, we, I just.
She's got the same request.
I've got the pretty much the same request, it's just the.
That her just was sixty-four?
It's, uh, fifty-nine.
Fifty, alright, okay.
And, um, it would eliminate, I have several filing cabinets down in the basement with this information in it. So if it eliminates, you know, those filing cabinets, you can move down in the basement too. So you just understand the quarter, the first phase, four. I have sixty-four thousand. Oh, okay. Well. I guess. Phase one and phase two. Right, okay. Yeah, you're right.
So do we just drop to fifty-four, or do we go up?
It's up to you. I mean, we can stay and let if we have to, but.
Okay, so.
Did you say? Or you? I have a plug here. What did you say? Well, there's two. Oh, I see, okay. We can just go with the first phase if that's.
Twenty-eight thousand?
No, the fifty-nine thousand.
Oh.
Four fifty-nine on the back. The phase. Either or, right? Yes, either or.
Well, if we're gonna do it, I wanna do it right the first time, that'd be my opinion.
Well, then go with the sixty-nine or sixty-four.
Where?
On the back page of this, inching the break down. So go with the.
Sixty-four, nine, sixty-five, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's the number I can.
Okay.
Like I'm at one seventy. Surveyor, you got basically the same time, right? You got two options or just the one? Just one. I mean, just the one in kind of chances, make sure they do a hundred percent accuracy.
Wait, start again with that. I was saying in there, I didn't quite catch it.
Yeah, uh, the second part is just double checking things and making sure they got it, and it's always good enough and everything, so they can correct anything. If it didn't scan out the first time, maybe come and redo it. But basically, mine just offer, um, Charlie Woodslur had twenty-eight years of surveys he's done for the county, and they're all in there in the office, and none of them are recorded anywhere.
They're right.
They're scanned or nothing. All of our ditch maintenance that we do, um, like ninety-three grand right now or better, um, all those records, none of them's saved anywhere. So, um, yeah, we don't have nothing, section corners, nothing's, other than what the original field knows, we can get from state if something's happened lost. But everything else is, will be lost and no way to get it back. And that, we have ditch record books too, as far as that, it shows, it gives a legal description, how you can replant it on the map and all that stuff too.
Be a way to work it today, the council will be there for the crap.
And this is just putting it on some junk drives, just to, we could store them off site, a couple of different places. I was gonna get two sets just to have them in case something was to happen here, that they're somewhere offsite, we can put them on the, on the computer and at least have access to them, start working immediately. This all come around when we get the co-op, I was trying to figure out how to do if we had a disaster like that, we need to get something recorded somewhere or scanned.
So what's yours up to?
It's, it's nine thousand, I think it was seven thirty-four.
Fifty-one thousand.
Really?
So, sir, you are right on the nose there, a hundred and seventy thousand.
So is the guy where you're at. Maybe go ahead and send this to council, cause like you did, you got to send it to the council, so if we approve it. Lauren? So how would the motion be? Do you just?
Hello?
We approve the contract pending council's approval? That would be my motion?
For the.
For the, um.
Recorder, surveyor, and assessor, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You want a second there, Lauren? Lauren seconds it, so I have a motion and a second that we approve, and I'm just gonna run them through here. The Carroll County Recorder's request for fifty-four thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Carroll County Surveyor's request for, uh,
Sixty-one.
Down here, fifty-one thousand, right? And Carroll County Assessor's request for sixty-five thousand, okay? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are all those for scanning devices?
Yes.
Okay.
No, devices, the government scan.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, these are scanning devices, yeah. Thank you, George. We are ready for Nate Wells. We're. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Well, Nate's passing those out. Again, thank you guys, everybody for having us here this morning. My name's Tim Jensen.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Tim, uh.
Tim Jensen?
Jensen, okay.
Just wanna make sure you can hear me.
Oh.
All right, I'll speak loud.
I'll ask you if I don't hear you.
So I know, Mr. Brown, I think you have been talking to Nate from my office just on a couple of different occasions, um, and asked us to come here this morning to present to the commissioners, tell you a little more about our company and, and what we do. Um, I'm, rest assured, I'm not here to ask for anything this morning, tell you anything. This is simply an introduction for us. Uh, we know you have some projects going on. Every community in the state of Indiana has some dollars that, as you guys just talked about, that they're looking to spend in different areas. We know other communities and counties that have other projects, uh, that are larger, whether it's a, you know, the jail projects that are going on, which we've been following years, obviously, and kind of the conversation there. So what we do as a company, Veritas was started ten years ago, and we come alongside of counties and cities and towns across the state of Indiana. And we help communities move from where they are to where they wanna be, right? So whatever that is, it can be a large complicated project, it could be a simple park project, it could be a lot of different things. Uh, but as you can see, our resume in there and the product that we gave you, uh, we, we've done a lot of work in this area. We represent the city of West Lafayette in almost every project that they do now. Uh, we are in Maryville and we are all over sixty-five. Boone County, we're doing the Boone County Jail, uh, currently as well. So we really act as third party owners representatives to come alongside and help you guys hire the right teams. We talk you through the different project delivery methods that are available, uh, for you to make sure that you're making the right choice as part of what it is, whether that is a design bid build. I know you may have heard about the BOT recently and then talked about those options. So we work through all of those and kind of help you understand your risk mitigation, to understand really that the right way to deliver a project. And then we typically like to stay on board and work with you throughout the project to make sure that you're getting what you're paying for. Um, our company, like I said, is ten years old. Uh, we've represented over a hundred different communities across the state now in the last ten years. Um, and are just trying to get our name out a little bit more to the counties because counties are a new market for us. So we're working in Boone County and Hancock County and Hamilton County right now. Our office is on the north side of Indianapolis. Uh, we have about eighteen people in our office that range anywhere from architects to construction managers to engineers to help us kind of build that, um, expert panel for every project. So every project that we do goes through a thorough review of all of our people in our office. Uh, we just recently also hired a former police chief who is helping us do security and, and safety assessments all across the state. So no matter what the public building is or the park or whatever, as you guys know, unfortunately, the culture that we live in has required a little bit different look at buildings and how we keep our people safe. And so we've, we've hired just recently, within the last two weeks, a police, a former retired police chief who comes alongside and does safety and security reviews, active shooter training for communities across the state as well. So that's it, gentlemen. We just wanted to make the presentation to you, give us, give you a little bit more information on who we are. Uh, if there's any interest in talking to us about anything that you have going on, just to see if it might be of benefit for you, we'd be happy to come back some other day or be with you, however it is you guys want. But I'm open for questions if you have any.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Thank you for your.
We are going to have a tough decision coming up here because we have really, including you, some very good, positive, uh, people come forward and, uh, and we wanna help them this morning. Uh, is there one thing about you and company that you just forgot to say, we should pick you as somebody else?
Well, it's a great question, sir. It depends on what you're looking for at, at the end of the day. Uh, we are not construction managers, so we're not gonna manage the construction project or any kind of construction project for you. We only serve as owners reps, so we don't play in both sides of the field. So we, we're not gonna be an owner's rep one day and a CM the next day. We are only owners reps. So we represent cities and towns across the state. We don't, we don't represent anybody else. And maybe you may have questions about what that really means.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, you wanna voice that question? Okay. So as a construction manager, again, we work with all the construction managers across the state. So whether it's Shield Sexton or Garmon, I know, on boys in the rooms, we, we've worked with a lot of these different individual companies. They would all put themselves out, I think primarily, and I don't wanna speak for Rich, but primarily as construction management firms. That, that's the kind of the main role that they play. Uh, that's, that's where they, and that's where they excel. They're all very good at that. We have never been construction managers while we have a lot of construction professionals on our team. We only represent the city and town that we are partnering with. And so for example, maybe the easiest way is to give you an example. In Boone County, um, they're doing their jail project or their EMT services in jail and, and Oregon and all those corners office through the BOT contract, which I think you guys have heard something about. I saw some heads nod and that went up, brought up. Um, they're doing that, they decided that they needed an owner's rep, somebody to help them just organize and, you know, all the different parts and pieces that are involved in that project. So that's, that was awarded to a company by the name of GM Development and Hagerman Construction is the one, Hagerman is the construction manager. Uh, GM is the developer for the BOT part of the project, and we are serving on the side of the table of the owners of the county and serving as their owners representative. And if you follow that project at all in the papers, you know there's been some political discourse about that project and should it happen, should it not happen. Uh, the good news for the county is, I think the council just voted for, for it to happen for the tax purposes, for it to happen just last week. But we actually just serve on that side of the table, so our fees are not what, I mean, we don't manage the day-to-day construction process. We just check your pay applications, we help negotiate change orders, we serve on your side of the table, no different than as you need legal counsel, you guys hire an attorney. If you're doing anything with real estate development or construction, you hire a firm like ours that comes in and helps you through those, those conversations with those professionals.
And your fees are based on what?
Our time. So we do not do percentage-based fees. Uh, we don't believe in percentage-based fees because it gives us no incentive to negotiate down. We wanna bring projects down for our constituents, for your constituents and for our clients. So we, we will set up a whole set of time for you, we'll actually show you the time that we're expecting to spend. We will do a guaranteed lump sum. That way, if we spend a whole lot longer than we thought, then you're capped off, whatever the number is. So we will, we'll guarantee our, our pricing, uh, no matter what. You're talking to the owner or the president here, so as we get into negotiations, I have the authority to do whatever we need to do on any project. I'm not saying there is a project right now, just on how we typically work. So I'll be involved typically at the beginning of all of the projects, kind of helping get the things going, um, to make sure that we're all set up, that we're representing you the way you wanna be represented as a county. Um, then our fee, again, we'll set a flat sum fee for the whole entire project. So whether that project is a ten million dollar project, if it's a twenty million dollar project, you'll know that number going into it along with the pay schedule, so there's no surprise. Uh, again, we don't do percentage because if somebody brings you a million dollar change order and we have a percentage of that project, we all, like, if we were to say we're at one and a half or two percent, then we would get another, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That's not how we work. We don't think that that's appropriate. So we actually try to drive that change order down. And by charging percentage, we don't feel, at least on the owner's rep side, that that's a, a fair adequate way to represent our clients.
Okay. I am not anywhere near actually the building, building of this size. So I'm trying to grasp all these little facets of it to fit together to make it work. And, uh, I appreciate your input here and, uh, we'll have to just mull this all over.
Sure, we understand that. And that's, that's exactly what we do as commissioner, is we come on your side, help you kind of think through and make sure you're hiring the right team and the right professionals. And I know you've already got, I believe it was our architect on board, maybe have got some, some, at least preliminary pricing, which is fine for this particular project. But, again, we'll help you on anything. It doesn't have to be this one, it could be something else. If you wanted to try us on something small and say, show me how you guys work, we'd be happy to do that, so.
So someone like you would be our next step as to who we were looking for, right? And you would help us do that, find a construction management?
Yes, we, we have, we do that all the time. If we, again, our scope is really what you want. So whatever it is you would want us to do, we could help you find a construction manager, we could help you find, you know, whatever that next step is. We'll help lay out the whole project schedule, the whole entire project budget, so that you understand exactly where all the money's going and how it happens. One of the other things about our office is that, obviously, given the market that we're in with increasing costs, we're constantly tracking costs across projects to make sure we understand what we need to do ahead of time. Um, you've probably heard of some of the supply chain issues that are happening in the market, um, with regards especially steel and how that's actually taking over a lot of plastics now because of the petroleum base, TBCs and other things like that, roofing materials. Uh, we have projects now that we're actually ordering steel before the design's even done, so that we can get steel in time to actually get a project completed. And so, uh, I know, and every, every CM or every construction manager at GC has those issues too, like they're all working through those. Uh, some are much better at it than others, uh, but we try to be a little proactive. Our whole job is to give you as the decision makers and the county council, uh, whatever information you need to make informed decisions. Like, that's our job. But we're not gonna make decisions for you, we're gonna give you all the info you have to have. And then you guys get to pick and choose and tell us what you need to do, and whether it's a BOT or a design build or whatever it is you guys wanna go, we'll help you through that process. We know all those processes and those statutes. Work with your attorneys and your financial advisors to, to get you a project that you're happy with, proud of, and needs, and needs every teenager.
So you would, more or less hold our hands through the whole BOT process?
Yes, sir.
So we fully understood what we were.
Yes, sir.
Dealing with.
With no, with no, we're not gonna submit on it at the end. Like, we have no, we're not gonna be submitting or trying to get that contract. We are just on your side, consultant.
You have a word leaving behind here for a minute?
No, because we're kind of beyond that, so we're, we're going to do the deal, the process. So this firm would be someone that we might even consider helping you. You know, I, I would wanna, you would consider the possibility of having another, as a club, help you add to the, after two.
We, we decided upon what we do and how it, the view was to us that the BOT process is how we wanted to move ahead.
Okay, great.
Now, the execution of that is another problem.
Yeah, because we're told we're gonna hire.
Yeah.
And help some very qualified.
Am I saying that right, Jeff?
Yes.
Have you issued the BOT RFP yet?
No.
So we can help you, I mean, a firm like ours, doesn't have to be us, can help you issue that BOT, that RFP, help you review those proposals, help you. Again, we don't get to vote though, you're gonna want to vote who that is, um, and then how that all works between you and the council, of course, with the money and everything else. But really understanding the process, we are process experts. We believe in two things at our company. People, number one, because our people are good and you people are good, right? So we're trying to figure out exactly what you're looking for. So we're trying to figure out exactly what you're looking for, so that we can represent your interests every single part of the way. The second piece of that is process. We're process experts. So I might not be a jail expert or I might not be a hospital expert, but we certainly know how to get a project done from beginning to end. There's a process that you walk through. We've taken great pains over the several, last several years to understand every statute of the state of Indiana and how those projects are delivered and how that risk gets allocated across. I have no problem with the B O T. We think it's one of the better options right now for cities and towns to use and counties for sure, because it's, number one, it's available, which it hasn't been until most recently, but, um, it's, it's available today and it's obviously becoming more popular because some of the flexibility that's in it. But there are some things that you have to watch within the statutes, make sure you do them correctly, um, so that you're, you're not challenged later on in the process.
Are you, are you adept at kicking an architect in the rear to keep them moving?
It's one of our specialties.
So, I'd like to hear that. Well, I don't know what else to ask right now because I'm eager, so, uh, uh, I know a lot more than I did six months ago.
I, I would imagine that these, these kinds of projects can be a little bit overwhelming at times, which is why our company, which is why our company exists. I started it ten years ago specifically for this. Our very first project was a fifty million dollar project in Orangeburg, Indiana. Um, and then over time, again, we've now represented probably over a hundred communities throughout the state doing projects just like this.
I had good fortune several years ago, talking for quite a while to, to the commissioners from, back from down around Orangeburg.
Yeah.
They were in a unique situation at that time. I had too darn much money, so.
Uh, the city and county often do have too much money then.
We do.
I understand that. I understand that.
Well, I appreciate you coming in and I will certainly.
Thank you for the time. I'd be happy to get back with you whenever you're interested, so.
Very good.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Pleasure.
Doug. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning. All right, I wasn't able to be here last week. Um, you guys should have a, an email that I sent you about medical bill.
Yeah.
Was there financial stuff on that?
Um, yeah, I don't think I did. So the, this, this subject, um, obviously was in an accident. Um, his medical bill is a conceded four hundred thousand dollars, like the letter said. Um, the lawyer is asking, um, all the people involved, including us hospitals and everything, reduce his bill by fifty percent so they can get everything settled. Um, his bill with us was nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. He actually is in the tracks program for the, um, collections for the state tax. Um, we got like eleven dollars last year, so, so it's not, it's not going to take a long time to get that, keep that accrued at this stage, right? So, um, I guess I just need to know what you guys want to do with it, if you want to accept that fifty percent. If so, um, just leave a sign there and I'll take it, send it back, back in and get the payment.
What's your opinion, Joe?
That's fifty percent.
I can tell you what, well, you need to first, first, you.
Yeah, I'll have to send another thing in there requesting that. Sounds like it's a little weird. Normally we have that written.
And that's, yeah, that's usually when we go through AccuMed, that's how that works, that they have to supply that. But this is to a lawyer, so I don't have any.
Warren.
Yeah.
I would put in at this point that I have known this kid since he was four, and I lost the other kid. His sister worked for my wife and I for probably fourteen years. And it's worked for her. Absolutely wonderful people.
Well, if you don't, what, that's another thing. It'll take twenty minutes.
And I would, I will say, if, if a person does have insurance, especially through Cross and Shield, a lot of times when we have contracts with those companies, they write off like two or three hundred dollars of any money. So, you know, if you would have had insurance, um, you'd probably take two or three hundred off of that because, um, there are good, awful amounts of, contractual allowances and stuff.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to do fifty percent. Like four hundred and sixty to fifty. What was the request, Ryan? Fifty percent.
That was not, I ran it, it's been a couple of weeks ago, good, good, uh, is he back before we hear? I guess we're all. He was a darn good pizza customer.
I appreciate it, so I, you know, responsible. Hard luck case too. Noted. Now, I'll second Steve's motion.
Did you say second?
I'll second.
Okay, just have a motion and a second to, uh, accept the request from young and young trial lawyers to reduce this by fifty percent. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will do it. And while we're doing that, I've got a, uh, one of my stories about this. So. I didn't have either one to sign this.
Why he signed, congratulations. I seen something on the, the social media where you was granted ten thousand dollars for the softball program. Um, this is the kind of people we employ, and this is what makes us. We got good employees, and that's pretty awesome. And so they trusted you with that money to issue to the, the children who you think needs it. That was pretty awesome. Yeah, because when you, when that, when they hand you that check for ten thousand, I watched the whole video. I'm like, what Doug doing now? Because you're always into something.
Um, I just have one other thing real quick, if I could, just to get a permission. Um, we recently had, um, one of our E M Ts, um, that works for us, has been here about twelve years, uh, lost his wife to cancer, and, um, she was pretty close to a lot of people at the Florida garage. So I would like to personally buy that tree, um, plant that at the Florida garage and, and honor her, put a little plaque, um, kind of like we did for, um, the gentleman up at the North Station that lost his son. Um, if I get your guys' approval to do that, I'll, it won't be expensive to the county. I'll pay their pain for that. We would like to, like to do that for him.
Yeah, well, I'm here for, remember the auditorium, correct? Um, you ready to make a motion to that?
Yeah, I'm making a motion.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay.
You say four?
Yeah, fully correct, definitely.
About, uh, twelve years ago, I suppose, there was a informal survey, uh, online at Purdue. Uh, it just kind of blew up and it was, put in the names of the most beautiful girl on Purdue campus. And, uh, of course, about every sorority house had somebody that would put them on, everything. It was just, it was really paying its teeth. The number two person that came up on that was that blonde gal that works at Jake's, which was the sister that, what you just, she was Miss America looking down, and she is a little gal from Ross. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
County attorney, Ted Johnson. First item is a power of attorney for Doug to handle the, uh, the, uh, Schedule Two and Schedule One, control substances. He needs authority to be able to do that ordering and so forth. So you should have a power of attorney form. It is a D E N form. And Doug, correct me if I'm misspeaking, you need this power of attorney to be able to, to order?
Yes.
Is that correct? You do a lot of it online?
Well, no, right, right now, we order every turn to I U Pharmacy and Lot. Yeah, we're hoping that continues. We hope we can continue to do that, but they may say that we're not allowed to do that any longer. And in that case, I would need to have that on file to.
So I, I adapted the form that Doug was providing, um, and, uh, that's what you have to write. So it needs to be approved by the, by the board, and then, uh, I made it set it up for a single signature so it can stay on one page, the way they had the form set up, is what happens, one signature hanging on it. Both, uh, board chairman and Doug's side.
All in favor of that, Aaron?
I mean, please.
I, I think, uh, two to three. Uh, one is for the auditor and then two for Doug, so he can have one stand.
Over you all three.
Right, yeah, they, they need to be notarized. Now, we could make a photocopy of, of the third copy that you issued, but.
So, I mean, you're notary to.
Yes.
For the witnesses. You've got witnesses.
Uh, the witnesses, I would suggest the other two commissioners, uh, sign as witnesses to, to the chairman's signature. Where, where do you see witnesses?
After Doug.
To, pardon?
Some of Doug's signatures, whole file, full file.
Yeah.
You sign that?
You can sign that, yeah. Uh, I don't know if it's the federal form. It's not Indiana law. It doesn't require witnesses, but they had it on the federal form, so I, I think we have, have signatures there.
Are you fully staffed still? Now, there was an issue with the title that you called me about. Did I get taken care of?
I dropped that off the bed, so.
And Ted has asked.
So what do you, you mean, Bill, I didn't look at this, Doug, is it?
There was something wrong with.
It's messed up.
Yeah.
It's messed up. It's supposed to be under the Carroll County Commissioners. One of the commissioners signed it as on name. The other thing is.
Cass County Commissioner signed it in his name.
Right. It's, I don't, I really don't know what to do with it.
Listen, he's always signed his name with the Commissioner of Carroll County, huh? I thought that's the way we all.
Do you know if you've done it?
This has already been approved, so.
Right.
We're going to need to act on it.
Okay.
Figure out.
Have you done any research about it? Or have you called me?